Yes, is it Mr Edwards?
Yes, my lord. Good morning, my lord.
Morning.
My lords, my ladies, there are two appeals before the court, one brought by Lancashire County Council and the second brought by NHS Property Services Limited. I appear with my honourable friends, Mr Pike and Miss Daisy Noble, on behalf of the appellant, Lancashire County Council in its capacity as landowner and, we say, local education authority. Mr Bealey, Queen's Counsel, appears for the defendant, the Secretary of State for the Environment, in the first appeal, and Mr Westway, who sits in the second row, appears for the interested party. In the conjoined appeal brought by the NHS Property Services Limited, Mr Lawrence, Queen's Counsel, appears for the appellant along with Mr Clay and Mr Adamic, and Mr Ashley Bowes, who sits at the end, appears for the interested party in that appeal.
Thank you.
Surrey County Council, who are the registration authority, have not participated at any appellate level so far as this claim is concerned. My lords, my ladies, so far as the structure of my submissions are concerned, and if convenient to the court, I propose to begin by dealing with some brief introductory matters concerning the context for village green registration, in particular the statutory framework, and then one or two matters of background fact. I'll then move, secondly, to the statutory incompatibility ground, which is the issue that is common to both of the appeals, and then I'll deal, thirdly, with the statutory holding power point, which is confined as an issue to the Lancashire County Council appeal.
No doubt you'll spend much more time on two than you're going to on three.
That is my intention, my lord.
Thank you.
And just for the avoidance of doubt, as I indicated in the courts below, the relief that the county council seek through these proceedings is a quashing order, and plainly we accept that in order to secure that relief, we would need to succeed both on the statutory incompatibility ground and on the ground relating to the statutory holding power. Can I deal or turn briefly then first to the statutory framework for the registration of land as a town or village green? The framework is helpfully summarised in the judgment of Mr Justice Ousley at first instance, between paragraphs seven and nine of his judgment, and is more fully set out in the opinion of Lord Hoffman in the appeal brought by Oxford City Council against Oxfordshire County Council, it's called the Trapgrounds case in practice, which is in the principal authorities bundle at tab fifteen. I don't take the court to either of those at this stage, but simply identify those sources for information. I would, however, just deal with seven, if I may, brief points relating to the statutory framework, which are perhaps most relevant for the appeals before the court. Point number one, albeit that there is now a statutory process by which a landowner may voluntarily seek to register his or her land as a village green. Generally, village green status is conferred following an application made to a registration authority by a local inhabitant, and that is the source of the registrations which are at issue before the court in both appeals. Secondly, those applications are usually determined by a Commons Registration Authority, which is normally a county council or a unitary authority who maintains a register of town or village greens under the Commons Registration Act 1965. Thirdly, in 2008, the defendant introduced new regulations, they are the Commons Registration England Regulations 2008, and they are in volume two, behind tab twenty-eight, which set out a new procedure for the process of considering and determining town or village green applications, and those regulations were introduced on a trial basis in a series of pilot areas, of which Lancashire County Council is one. And the 2008 regulations were replaced by new regulations in 2014, but again, their operation is limited to a series of pilot areas, and the pilot process or the trial process has continued for the last ten and a half years, essentially.
Do you know why they needed a pilot for ten years? I mean, this all goes back to the sort of informal inquiries, which are still being held presumably.
Yes, my lord.
But in parallel with these sort of pilot procedure.
Yes, my lord, I was going to come to the informal inquiries in a moment, if I may, just in terms of explaining the procedure in thought, but in answer to my lord's point, I have no idea why this trial period has gone on.
The Secretary of State will be able to tell us in due course.
There we are. And so far as the criterion for the determination of applications are concerned, could I just invite the court briefly to turn, please, to the Commons Act 2006, and in particular section fifteen, which is in the principal authorities bundle behind tab one? Section fifteen in its current form is set out on page fifteen in tab one. Section fifteen of the Commons Act 2006, subsection one, any person may apply to the Commons Registration Authority to register land to which this part applies as a town or village green, in a case where subsections two, three or four applies. Subsection two, this section applies where, A, a significant number of inhabitants of any locality or of any neighbourhood within a locality have indulged as of right in lawful sports and pastimes for a period of not less, a period, forgive me, of at least twenty years, and they continue to do so at the time of the application. And then subsection three, this section applies where, and subsection A is the same, essentially used by a significant number of inhabitants of a locality or of a neighbourhood within a locality who have indulged as of right in lawful sports and pastimes for a period of at least twenty years; B, they cease to do so before the time of the application but after the commencement of this section; and C, the application is made within the relevant period. And subsection three A, the relevant period in England is now one year. It was two years at the time that the application was made in the Lancashire case. So effectively the period of grace, as it's referred to, which allows an application to be made within a period following the cessation of qualifying use is now two years, and it was one year. So far as the.
Sorry, you said it was, it is now one year and was two.
Yes, I said the other way around, yes, my lord. It was two years at the time that section fifteen was introduced. It was then reduced in England and England only to one year by an amendment made by the Growth and Infrastructure Act.
Two years from when, Mr Edwards?
Two years from the cessation of qualifying.
Thank you.
If I can then just make good that by explaining the basis of the application in the Lancashire case, the application was originally made by the interested party under subsection two, which means that qualifying use had to continue to the date of the application. There was then shortly before the public inquiry, a request to add in the alternative, an application made under subsection three, that is reflecting the possibility of there being a termination of qualifying use, that wasn't resisted, and the application was determined by the inspector under subsection three. And the basis of that is some fencing and some notices were put up before the application was made, which, if that factually was found to be the case, then the application under subsection two was bound to fail, and therefore the application under subsection three was made and determined. Point number five, the process for determination of applications is set out in various regulations, and different regulations apply within pilot areas and non-pilot areas. There is, as Lord Carmwood has observed, outside pilot areas, no requirement for a public inquiry to be held in respect of an application, but it has become usual practice that where there is a disputed issue of fact, or where there is something particularly controversial about an application, the registration authority will appoint either a senior barrister or solicitor to hold an inquiry, and thereafter to produce a report with a recommendation, and that practice was endorsed by the Court of Appeal in a case called Whitney and the Commons Commissioners some time ago. In pilot areas, the position is slightly different, in the sense that although applications are normally still determined by the registration authority, where the registration authority has an interest in the outcome of the application, and I quote from the statutory language of the regulations, such that there is unlikely to be confidence in the authority's ability to impartially determine, impartially to determine the application, they must refer the application to the planning inspectorate, who then become the determining authority. And because Lancashire County Council was the owner of the land that was the subject of the application in Lancashire, the application was referred to the planning inspectorate for determination. Point number six, the effect of registration on the current law, and following the decision of the House of Lords in Oxford City Council versus Oxfordshire County Council, the so-called Trapgrounds case, which is in the authorities' volume at tab fifteen, local inhabitants upon registration become vested with an enforceable civil right to continue to use the land for lawful sports and pastimes, and that essentially is an inference that was drawn by the House of Lords in that case, in terms of what the effects of registration would be.
Yes, it didn't have any basis in anything at all, did it? It was an invention.
It was dealt with at some length by Lord Hoffman, who simply, well, so simply concluded that the registration process was intended to have some effect, to give rise to some consequences.
He assumed, I mean, originally the intention was there'd be another act which told you what the effect of registration would be, that never happened, and so he inferred an intention to do what he said and where.
Precisely.
That is the present law.
Precisely, my lord, and there was some debate, as your lordships and your ladyships are aware, in the Trapgrounds case, about whether there was in fact any evidence of an intention for there to be a second stage of legislation, as was found by Lord Denning and others in some of the earlier cases, but as Lord Carmwood indicates, there was an inference drawn that there was an intention that rights be vested. And so far as those rights are concerned, again, it's not established through the legislation, but it is assumed in practice that the rights vest in the inhabitants of either the locality or of the neighbourhood which gave rise to registration in the first place, again, that is an inference that's drawn.
And effect of registration on the owner's rights?
Sorry, my lord.
Effect of registration on the rights of the owner of the land?
Well, my lord, that's a point I'm going to come to in a moment.
You are, well, good, because, I mean, we'd like to hear exactly how you put that.
By way of precursor, the effect both of the rights and the Victorian legislation, which I will come to in just a moment, are in, in practice, such that they would prevent the owner develop, certainly developing land, or doing anything else on the land that would be in conflict with the exercise of the rights and the protection.
Well, you're coming on to that.
I'm coming on to that.
Thank you.
So far as the effects of registration, the second point is that the Victorian legislation, long established and set out in both the Enclosure Act of 1857 and the Commons Act of 1876, and both of those pieces of legislation, or the relevant sections, are set out in volume two, tabs twenty-five and twenty-six. They provide protection to town or village greens, and the effect of registration, the House of Lords concluded in Oxfordshire, was that that Victorian legislation applies to newly registered greens, and again, has an effect in terms of securing their protection, and also an effect on the landowner's ability to do anything on the land inconsistent with them. And as I foreshadowed a moment ago, and just by way of confirmation, there is nothing in either the Commons Act 1965, or in the Commons, the Commons Registration Act 1965, forgive me, or the Commons Act 2006 that says anything about rights or the protection afforded by the Victorian legislation, and the accrual of rights and the application of the Victorian legislation was a matter of inference that was drawn by the courts. Lastly, and lastly, outside pilot areas, section fourteen of the Commons Registration Act 1965 remains engaged. I don't take the court to it, but it's set out at page, in volume two, page seven four six, and that allows a landowner, following registration of his or her land, to make an application to the Chancery Division for an order either reversing the registration or replacing it with a different form of registration. Now, that procedure has been held by the Court of Appeal, a case called Betterment Properties versus Dorset County Council, as allowing a full merits review of the decision to register land, and plenty of landowners who have been on the receiving end of village green registration have taken advantage of that opportunity. That opportunity.
I didn't realise that section fourteen went that far. What's the case that says full merits review?
Yeah, it's a case, formal title is Betterment Properties Weymouth Limited.
Reference?
Dorset County Council, two thousand and seven, E W.
Is it in the bundle?
It isn't in the bundle, my lord, it is not in the bundle.
Okay, well, it's only, it's a point by analogy, isn't it? You've not got that facility.
We have not got that, precisely, my lord, just to give you.
Was I in that?
There were, there were a series.
There was a series of betterment cases, I didn't know that I wasn't.
I don't believe, your lordship, I think it was Lord Justice Ricks Lloyd and Laws in the Court of Appeal in that Betterment case, affirming a decision of Mr Justice Lightman.
Yes, I remember the case.
And just responsible by Lord Wilson's point, the, the, the report of the Court of Appeals decision is two thousand and nine, one Weekly Law Reports, three four four.
Thank you.
My lord, as my lord has already indicated, the opportunity for that merits review is not available in pilot areas. Now, my lord, so far as then the factual context is concerned, the material facts are, as the court would expect, set out in the agreed statement of facts, and I don't take the court to that. I would, however, just briefly, if I may, introduce the decision letter of the inspector, if I may.
But I just, the full merits review, that was in a case in two thousand and seven, when did your, the pilot scheme first come in, the legislation related to that?
The pilot schemes came in in two thousand and eight, two thousand and eight regulation.
So that would have been done with knowledge of the, I mean, that would, the legislation which took away the rights to a merits review in the courts, would have been done with knowledge of the Betterment decision?
One assumes so, yes, I mean, certainly, certainly the timeline.
I mean, it seems slightly odd that you lose your right to a merits review in the court because you're in a pilot area.
There is still, as we've indicated in the case, there is still a procedure, as you would expect, in the Commons Act 2006, section nineteen, for a procedure where rectification can be sought, but certainly on its express language, that section is much more limited than section fourteen of the Commons Registration Act 1965.
Isn't there also a procedure, what, if you were to start planning permission and obtain planning permission, that then you would be able to, as it were, put a time limit on when registration could occur?
Yes, my lady, there was a, there were a series of amendments made to the Commons Act 2006 by the Growth and Infrastructure Act 2013, which introduced through schedule one A, a series of limitations on the ability to make a town or village green application. And in general terms, those limitations arise either when the land becomes the subject of an application for planning permission, or secondly, when it becomes identified as an area for, put in general terms, prospective development in a consultation draft of a development plan produced by a local planning authority. The background to that is that it became certainly recognised on the part of government that town green applications were being used as an attempt to stop development when other courses of action were unavailable to those opposed to the development, and that led to some general comments by, I think it was Lord Walker in the Lewis case, about the village green industry and using the procedure as, I think his words were guerrilla warfare in the context of seeking to prevent development. That was then recognised by government, and government introduced through Parliament the changes through the Growth and Infrastructure Act, such that when a parcel of land becomes the subject of active consideration through the planning process, then the ability to make a town or village green application then falls away. So that was the background to those changes.
That's not of relevance to this case.
That is not relevant to it. Turning then, if I may, as indicated, to the factual context briefly, could I just invite the court to take up the core volume in the Lancashire appeal? And turn within it to page two, three, one, eight.
Yes.
Two, three, one, eight is the first page of the inspector's decision letter. I don't need to trouble the court with anything on that page, but if I can invite the court to turn on to page two, three, four, four. There is a plan.
You remind me, I mean, she's a solicitor, is there a special body of sort of village green inspectors, do we know?
Not formally, my lord, I mean, what tends to happen, I should say that village green applications that end up before the planning inspectorate are relatively, relatively rare, because it's only in certain limited circumstances. What in my experience tends to be the case is that inspectors at the planning inspectorate who deal with public rights of way issues of that nature tend to also deal with town and village.
And they're likely to be lawyers, are they?
Sorry?
They're likely to be lawyers.
Not, not always, lord, no, not really. Certainly the inspectors who deal with rights of way disputes are often former local authority rights of way officers and members of the relevant institute, but certainly not always lawyers. The, the planet page.
Mr Edwards, I have to say that I found the plan two, one, two, in appendix two, better. Is there any reason why we can't use that rather than this?
I was going to say, it's a much clearer plan at page two, one, two. The, the plan at both of those pages, they are the same, and that is the application plan that was originally submitted by Miss Beverton in support of her application. Just forgive me. Yeah, this, the page two, one, two is in appendix part two, which I'm afraid I understand is not on the, the memory.
Appendix part two is, doesn't carry the electronic numbers.
So I understand.
For some reason that I don't fully understand, but I, for my part, don't mind.
Yes, so far as the areas of land are concerned, the areas of land that were the subject of the application are those identified as A, B, C, D and E. Areas A, B, C and D were registered, area E was not, because the inspector formed the view there was insufficient evidence of use. So far as the, what is shown on the map and the wider context, your lordships and your ladyship will see on both plans, but perhaps most clearly on page two, one, two, identified to the, to the right of area A and E are shown in landscape on the plan A school, that is Moreside Primary School, and that was a school that has recently been extended so as to encroach closer to the boundary with area A. There is also a school identified outside the red line on two, one, two, which is a separate school, it's a Roman Catholic school, and that doesn't have any use of the land. So far as, as far as areas A, B and E are concerned, they were acquired in 1948 by the county council as one of a larger parcel of land, which included the land on which Moreside Primary School was subsequently constructed, and areas C and D were acquired in 1961. The court has, again, in appendix part two, in the internal pagination, page two, five, two, the statement from the headmaster of the school, Mr Shone, the statement was given to the court, and that indicates that the school is a large and popular school, expanding to three hundred and, six hundred and thirty primary aged schoolchildren by 2020. So far as the description of the land is concerned, if I could invite the court to go, please, in the inspector's decision letter to paragraphs ten and eleven, which are on, and these are the electronic and printed pagination numbers, two, three, one, nine and two, three, two, oh. And there is helpfully set out in paragraphs ten to twelve of the inspector's decision letter, a brief but not unhelpful description of the various parcels of land at the time of her decision. Perhaps I could just invite the court just to consider those briefly.
Yes, we've read that, Mr Edwards.
You, and therefore, the court will appreciate that, as far as A and B are concerned, they were fenced by the time of the inspector's decision. Area B is in use as a school playing field and was at the time of the decision. Area A had been used for a construct, for, as effectively a construction compound associated with the extension of the primary school, and is now used as effectively a playground for the school. Until the end of the qualifying period, which was in 2008, the inspector found that there had been no use of area A, but there had been some low level use of area B in association with the school, and that is set out, or that conclusion is set out of paragraph one oh three of the inspector's decision. Again, for completeness and simply for note at this stage, Mr Shone, the headmaster, in his statement at appendix part two, pages two, five, two to two, five, three, indicates that areas A and B are in use, use for various, for various activities, including PE lessons, inter-school matches, extracurricular activities, teaching, and as a playground for primary schoolchildren at breaks and lunchtime. And my lord, the final, my lords and ladies, the final point on the factual background is just simply for confirmation that notwithstanding the inspector's decision, the land has not yet been registered, as I agree, it has been entered on the register, so issues about recitals, et cetera, have not accrued, and the reason for that is that the county council have taken the view that registration should not formally take place until the outcome of this litigation is known.
So the effect of that is suspend any operation of the nineteenth century statutes pending our decision?
Yes, that's, that's essentially the consequences of that, my lord. So, my lord, those, my lords and my ladies, those were the eight matters of sort of background and context. If I can then turn to ground one, if I may, and can I invite the court, please, to take out firstly, volume two of the authorities' bundle? And I'm going to begin, if I may, by just drawing attention briefly to four provisions within the Education Act 1996 that set out the duties of a local education authority. So, volume two, tab thirty-three, beginning on page eight, four, seven. Page eight, four, seven includes section thirteen of the Education Act 1996.
They're all set out in your case, aren't they?
They're all set out in the case, my lord, yes. Section thirteen is the general duty on a local education authority, which is that the local authority shall, so far as their power enable them, to do so, contribute towards the spiritual, moral, mental and physical development of the community by securing that efficient primary education and secondary education, dot, 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 are available to meet the needs of the populace of their area. It's the general duty applying within the local authority area here, Lancashire County Council. Second of the four provisions, if I can invite the court to turn on to page eight, fifty, which is section fourteen. The 1996 Act, subsection one, a local authority shall secure that sufficient schools for providing primary education and, and education, that is, secondary education, are available for their area, and the schools available for an area shall not be regarded as sufficient for the purposes of subsection one unless they are sufficient in number, character and equipment to provide for all pupils the opportunity.
Well, I mean, what do we get from these? I mean, clearly the authority has duties to provide schools and have sufficient schools, but more than that, do these provisions tell us anything?
These set out, we say, the statutory duties on a local education authority, and as I was going to come on to in a moment, that education authority, unsurprisingly, is given power to acquire land for the purposes.
We, we know that, but in terms of the detail, do they tell us anything more than the obvious, which is that a local authority has statutory powers to acquire land, to provide schools, and has a duty to provide schools?
Probably, probably not, my lord, I mean, it's simply provide the, the general overriding duty on a local education authority and specific.
And what you've got to deal with is the argument that the New Haven type statute was much more specific, and we'll come on to that.
We'll come on to that, yeah.
So, in the light of what Lord Carmwood has said, just give us the section, the third section of the trio.
The third section, my lord, is, it's actually not a section of the Education Act 1996, it's regulation ten of the School Premises Regulations 2012, tab thirty-six, page eight, six, one. And the fourth provision is section one, seven, five of the Education Act 2002, which is tab thirty-four, page eight, five, eight, and that deals with the obligations in terms of safeguarding.
Right, so you add the five together.
You add the, essentially the five.
To get your, your foundation for statutory incompatibility.
Yes, those set, those set out the duties on the education authority. Now, my lord, so far as.
But they're unlikely to be any different for a public authority providing any service, I mean, or public authorities in general have duties to provide services and require land to do so.
Precisely, my lord, if your, if your lordship thinks to, for example, provisions under the Housing Act in terms of the duties. the Housing Act in terms of the duty to provide housing, there are the-
Are you suggesting there's anything special about the Education Act authorities as compared to Housing Act or any others?
No, I mean, I will come on to other types of land held for local authority for other purposes in due course, but certainly if there is an obligation, a duty, to discharge certain functions, and that duty involves the use of land for those functions, then the same kind of considerations apply as applied.
Yes. So you do put emphasis on the fact that there's a duty to provide certain facilities, and that can only be done by acquiring land or having land for that purpose?
Precisely, my lord. And the next submission I was going to make is that to discharge the duty to secure sufficient schools and provide sufficient play space plainly requires the use and development of land, and there are express powers provided to a local education authority to acquire land, either compulsorily or by agreement for the discharge of those duties.
Yes, so if Moorfield School needs expanding, they've got to do that, and you would say on the land next door.
That's what I was saying, my lord, yes.
Or at least that's the obvious place to do it.
Exactly. And I think it goes a little further than that, because once land, of course, is acquired by a local authority, its powers in terms of the use and management of that land are much more circumscribed than would be the case with a private individual. I mean, a private individual can use land that they own for whatever they want, subject to planning control. A local authority is not in that position, because once it has acquired land for a specific statutory purpose, it cannot use that land for any other statutory purpose unless it goes through an express process of appropriation. And that process of appropriation is set out in terms of its statutory terms in section one hundred and twenty two of the Local Government Act, and it requires a deliberative process on the part of the local authority, that the land they currently own, hold, is no longer required for the purposes for which they hold the land, and therefore can be appropriated to a different purpose. So there is, we would say, a clear fix, as it were, between land that is acquired for a specific statutory purpose and the statutory purpose that relates to the land. So could I then, at this stage, if I may, just make five short submissions arising from the statutory context? Firstly, the Education Act and the associated legislation imposes duties on a local education authority, including to provide schools and school play space sufficient to meet the needs within the area. Secondly, to discharge those duties, land is needed, and the education authority is given express power to acquire land for those purposes. Thirdly, before acquiring land by agreement, the local authority must be satisfied that the land is required for the purpose of the discharge of those duties, such as as a local education authority. Fourthly, if the land is acquired for the discharge of those duties, then the land can only be used for those duties or functions absent some appropriation. And fifthly, it follows in our submission that therefore there is a fix in terms of the statutory duties to the land. The land has been acquired because it was deemed necessary to discharge those duties and, and functions, and can only be used for the discharge of those duties and functions.
Could I just ask, you mentioned powers of compulsory purchase.
Yes.
Would, would they apply, or could they be used to extinguish rights if rights have been acquired in relation to a town or village green?
The answer is, my lord, yes, but there are very specific statutory mechanisms that apply in terms of the compulsory purchase of land that is a town or village green. And they are, from recollection, set out in the Acquisition of Land Act 1981, and they involve provision of exchange land for the land, the village green that is acquired. There's a fallback position, a special parliamentary procedure, but there is a, as we were, a particular-
Could, could they be used for land the authority already owns?
No.
I mean, if this land is subject of village green rights, how, what can the authority do to get rid of it?
They certainly can't acquire land that they already own by compulsory purchase, obviously. What they can do is appropriate land that is a town or village green to a different purpose. That might not save them, they want to use it for school purposes, but they can appropriate land. But even appropriation of land that is a town or village green attracts a requirement for exchange land to be provided.
I mean, I'm just getting my head around this. They're holding land for educational purposes, so they can appropriate it for-
Something else.
-another purpose, which they don't need it, in order to get rid of the village green rights?
Yeah, I mean, it's, whether that would be lawful in a public law sense is a different matter. I mean, they certainly couldn't appropriate land that they hold for education purposes to get rid of its village green status, to use it for education purposes, because appropriation requires-
There isn't any obvious mechanism of getting rid of village green rights, I don't think, is there?
No.
What, I mean, the other thing I'm not quite clear about is, if they acquired this land in 1948, or whatever it was, could they have acquired it for general purposes without necessarily needing it for any immediate purpose, and then, in due course, appropriate it for a particular purpose?
Well, even in 1948, they would have had to acquire it for one of their statutory functions, section thirty, one of the provisions of the Local Government Act 1933-
Yes.
-that provides for that.
So even by, even if it was by agreement, they'd still have to put it into some, some box of statutory purposes?
Precisely, my lord. They would still, they would, the provisions of the 1933 Local Government Act, which provide a power for local authorities to acquire land, are essentially, and in substance, in the same terms as section one hundred and twenty eight of the 1972 Act, which provides a power to acquire land for the discharge of essentially its function. So there has to be a link between the acquisition and the functions.
Yes.
I was then going to turn on, if I may, just to briefly the, the question of the effects of registration in the current context, which my lord Wilson raised at the very beginning. I mean, as I made clear, it's, on the current law, in any event, the effect of registration of land as a green is to give rise to the accrual of rights and the application of the Victorian penal legislation relating to village greens. The effect in the present context with regard to Lancashire County Council's land is that any future use of the land for any built form of development would be absolutely precluded on the current law, because that would interfere with the discharge of the recreational rights that accrue, and also with the Victorian legislation. Secondly, the fencing that is presently around areas and B, areas A and B, to provide security to the playground and the playing fields would need to be removed, and certainly some local residents are already agitating for that. Or at the very least, there would need to be open unrestricted access through that fencing. And just by way of a footnote, just invite the court to note that the enclosure of any village green is contrary to section twenty nine of the Commons Act 1876. Thirdly, local inhabitants would become vested with a right to access the land for lawful sports and pastimes at any time, and therefore the playing of games, which would interfere with that access and the exercise of rights over the land, would potentially give rise to a conflict with those rights and be enforceable. Fourthly, in practice, the land could not continue to be used by the primary school since, I'm sure for obvious reasons, allowing use by children when there is free and unrestricted access by the public would not be consistent with safeguarding obligations. And indeed, as Mr Shone in his statement, appendix volume two, page two five two, has indicated hygiene issues, particularly as a result of dog walking, would be a concern. And lastly, there is a claim that part of the Moor Side Primary School, as extended, has encroached onto area A. Now, that is not accepted as a matter of fact by the registration authority, by the landowner, I should say, by the county council, but if that is proved to be the case as a matter of fact, then plainly an issue would arise about the entitlement to allow that extension to continue. So as such-
Wouldn't the inspector have ruled on that?
No, no. And fairness, it wasn't a matter for the inspector to have ruled on.
I see.
And, so as a matter of fact, the effect of registration, so far as the county council is concerned, is that it would plainly prevent, impede and restrict to adopt language in New Haven, the use of the registered green in any meaningful way in its capacity as local education authority. And coming back to the point Lord Wilson put to me at the beginning of my submissions, that is, those series of consequences of registration, so far as the county council is concerned, would apply to, you know, any land that was registered as a green, in the sense that a private landowner could never use the land in a way that was inconsistent.
When the landowner, the local authority appropriates land for a statutory purpose, is that information available to the public?
Generally, not, unless, as is often the case, there is a, effectively a public decision-making process by committee that's open to the public. The only exception, my lady, to that, is that the Local Government Act 1972, section one hundred and twenty two, provides that a specific consultation procedure is engaged where the land is used as open space. Just, before I give the right reference to that for a moment. Yes, it's subsection one hundred and twenty two of the Local Government Act, subsection two A, which is principal authorities bundle, page eighty four. So where land is, an, an open space means land that is in use as open space, so it doesn't have to have any specific status, but if it's used as open space, there is a public consultation procedure before appropriation.
Okay.
And just, just for completeness, my lady, as I indicated in response to Lord Sales, if there is an appropriation of land that is already a town and village green, a whole series of different provisions apply, including the requirement for exchange land.
I was thinking of the historical situation.
So, my lord and my lady, that is all I was proposing to submit at this stage, so far as effects of registration are concerned. Can I turn then, if I may, to the New Haven decision? And that is, in terms of the decision of this court, is in the common authorities bundle, tab twenty one, beginning on page six one six. Can I take the court first, please, to paragraphs two through to seven in the judgments of Lord Newburgh and Lord Hodge, and that's beginning on page, the bottom of page six three two. Paragraphs two through to seven set out the relevant parts of the statutory context in which the land in New Haven was held. And I don't propose to, to, to read or invite the court to reread those sections again, but I just draw attention to three points. Firstly, New Haven Port and Properties exercised functions as a statutory undertaker. Secondly, the undertaking was to maintain and operate a port at New Haven. And thirdly, in terms of the principal nature of the powers and duties of the port as a statutory undertaker. Firstly, in paragraph three of the judgment, references made to the New Haven Act of eighteen forty seven, and in particular, section forty nine, that provides that the then trustees shall maintain and support the said harbour of New Haven. The second relevant statutory provision is section five of the New Haven Act of eighteen seventy eight, and that is in section, paragraph five, in this section of the judgment, and the extract is then set out, which provides that upon payment of rates made payable by this in a special act and subject to other provisions, the harbour, dot, 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 shall be open to all persons for the shipping and shipping of goods and the embarking and landing of passengers. And the third relevant provision is set out in paragraph seven, which is from the New Haven Order of nineteen ninety one, and that, within article ten one of the order, provides powers for the undertaker to carry out works within the land. So those are the provisions. Make observation at this point that none of those particular powers or duties is specific to the beach in question in New Haven, but relates to the area of land held by New Haven Port and Properties, which comprises the port at any point in time. And secondly-
So the beach is part of the harbour?
Well, the beach is part of the area of land that is owned by the operator.
And the beach that arose, well, paragraph nine tells you how the beach came into being, which was purely by accretion as a result of some works they had carried out in the eighteen seventies, eighteen sixties.
Yes, my lord, your lordship's entirely right. As I understand the position, it was a result of certainly tidal movements, as a result of the construction of a breakwater, effectively.
So the beach sort of came into being, and then for many years it was simply there and used by the inhabitants, and-
Absolutely.
Much more recently, the New Haven Harbour authorities, well, we, we could quite like to use that to bring it into our harbour, but-
The, the, yes, my lord, the, the position was precisely that. The beach was never actually used for anything associated with any harbour functions at all, in terms of the evidence. It had been used effectively for recreation. There were some steps going down from the harbour wall down to the beach, and people used it to bathe, et cetera. And albeit there were no fixed proposals for use of the beach, the harbour authority became aware that the matter needed to be resolved, as it were. They closed off the access onto the beach that precipitated the application.
When I said the beach is part of the harbour, did you disagree with that, Mr Edwards?
No, what I indicated by way of response is that the beach is certainly within the landholding of New Haven Port and Properties. And coming back to the point I made when I took the court through the, the powers and duties, there are powers and duties that apply to the port operator. None of them is specific to the beach, or indeed specific to any area of land.
All right. I mean, this is one of the critical issues, as well as any difference, where you have a harbour authority which requires an area of land for a harbour, and then uses it for different purposes within its harbour use, and some is unused, as compared to a school authority, which in this case, generally, is not acquiring under a specific act, but is acquiring under a general education act. And you say there's no, no difference-
Well, I say there's no, and I'll come to that point by reference to paragraph ninety three, if I may, in a moment. I say there is no difference. But what I do submit is there is nothing within the legislation, as recorded in the judgments in New Haven or at all, that places specific obligations on the statutory undertaker relating to the land at issue. They are simply general obligations to support and maintain a harbour. Plainly, they need to acquire and hold land for that purposes, but they are general obligations that are specific to the, the land that they may own from time to time for the purposes of discharging that particular function.
And of course, there too many of the functions are covered by the General Legislation Harbour Clauses Act, which provides the general framework of harbour authorities.
Precisely, my lord, and those then are applied through specific legislation to the New Haven Harbour. Can I then take the court on, if I may, just to the analysis on this issue by the, this court in, in New Haven? Can I invite the court to turn on, please, to paragraph ninety one, which is at page six five six? And paragraph ninety one, which I don't dwell on to any great extent, follows on from a series of paragraphs where the court considered and examined the law both in England and Wales and in Scotland, relating to the acquisition of prescriptive rights through long user, both in the terms of public rights of way and private rights of way. And the court understandably confirms that, well, you can't really transpose those issues across because the underlying theory is different between the acquisition of public and private rights of way, which depend upon assumed or presumed dedication or grant, and village green rights, which are different. But what the court does, following that analysis in paragraph ninety one, in the second sentence, is indicate it is nonetheless significant, in our view, that historically in both English law and Scots law, albeit for different reasons, the passage of time would not give rise to prescriptive acquisition against a public authority which had acquired land for specific statutory purposes and continued to carry out those purposes where the user found it on would be incompatible with those purposes. That obviously is a statement of principle arising from the previous analysis, but one that perhaps is not without significance in terms of indicating that in other contexts of the acquisition of prescriptive rights, incompatibility with the purposes by which a public, or for which a public authority acquired the land, would be a limitation on the acquisition of those rights through various mechanisms. Can I then take the court on to what I think is common ground, at least between the appellant and the secretary of state, the critical paragraph, which is paragraph ninety three, and just does bear a degree of close scrutiny? The question of incompatibility is not one, is one of construction. It does not depend on the legal theory that underpins the rules of acquisitive prescription. And then this, the question is, does section fifteen of the 2006 Act apply to land which has been acquired by a statutory undertaker, whether by voluntary agreement or by powers of compulsory purchase, and which is held for statutory purposes that are inconsistent with its registration as a town or village green? In our view, it does not, where Parliament has conferred on a statutory undertaker powers to acquire- Where Parliament has conferred on a statutory undertaker powers to acquire land compulsorily and to hold that land for defined statutory purposes, the 2006 Act does not enable the public to acquire by user rights which are incompatible with the continuing use of the land for those statutory purposes. I'll come on to the next sentence if I may in a moment. In our submission, if you, the Court, were simply to apply, the question as posed in the third sentence of that paragraph, does section 15 of the Act apply to land which has been acquired by an undertaker and which is held for statutory purposes that are inconsistent with its registration as a town or village green, we would say that applies squarely to land that is acquired by a local authority for the purposes of the exercise of its statutory functions as local education authority.
It depends on what's meant by statutory undertaker, whether it has a narrow meaning in that, or a wider one?
Well, my lady, plainly, in New Haven, the Court were considering the position of a statutory undertaker, but it is common ground between all the parties insofar as the Lancashire Appeal is concerned, and was found to be the case in both of the lower courts, that the principle in New Haven, statutory incompatibility, is not confined to statutory undertakers and would apply generally to other public authorities.
For our notebook, remind us, there is a definition of statutory undertaker somewhere, isn't there?
It's a term, my lord, that is used in planning legislation. It's also a term, as I recall, that's used in compulsory purchase legislation, but certainly, you know, in the specific context of those pieces of legislation.
There isn't one in the Commons Act, is there?
No.
I mean, there are statutory undertaking definitions all over the place, and they follow a similar format.
Oh.
But I mean, it's one of the curiosities of this case, in a way, and one of the reasons why I was, didn't go along with this particular bit of it, was that there's nothing, it's said to be a question of construction of the, of section 15, but it's quite difficult to put your finger on what it is in section 15 that's actually being construed. I mean, can you help on what, how, what is one reading into section 15 to get to the result?
Well, I don't, my lord, I don't think you're reading anything into section 15, but can I just come back to that point in a moment? Plainly, your lordship's absolutely right, that there are various pieces of legislation that define the term statutory undertaker and use it for specific purposes. There is nothing in the Commons legislation to that effect, nor indeed is there anything in the legislation that apply to New Haven that referred to the New Haven Port and Properties as a statutory undertaker. It's simply just a term that was applied to the particular functions exercised by that body. In answer to my lord's point, as I understand the principle in New Haven, nothing was sought to be implied into section 15. It was simply a point about the irresolvable conflict between land being held pursuant to other statutory powers and duties for a specific statutory function, and the consequences of registration of land as a green pursuant to section 15. So effectively, it sits outside section 15 itself, and is a question of balancing two different, competing statutory duties, as it were, the duty on local education authority, and I suppose the duty on a landowner, so far as a registered green is concerned, and seeking to derive from that, you know, what parliamentary intention was in terms of resolving those.
But Lord Carmas may have a point. It may not be a statutory construction as such, but we all know what we're talking about here.
No, yes, I think that is-
We do, or we don't.
We do.
Or some of us do.
I mean, it's comparing, it's comparing the 18, what is it, 1837 statutes with the Commons statute, and dealing with the perceived incompatibility, which prevails.
Well, that's one possible explanation.
Which may not be construction as such, but I think we all know what we're talking about.
I think-
Oh, you're sorry, I'm afraid I don't.
Oh, okay.
My lord does, and I, this is what I really need help on, because in that case, I saw a lot of force in what Justice Richardson said in the Court of Appeal about the approach, but we must take it that that was rejected by the majority. So I certainly, for my part, will need help as to precisely what is meant by a principle of statutory construction, which doesn't seem to be concerned with reading anything into the particular statutory interpretation. But, you know, we're faced with, that is the majority view, and that's finally ours.
Lord, if I can just, see if I can assist. As I see the matter, it isn't a matter of construing section 15. I mean, section 15 is clear enough in terms of what it provides, in terms of the requirements for registration, but what follows from section 15 are certain consequences, which is the accrual of rights and the protection afforded by the Victorian legislation, which means that certain activities would be absolutely precluded on a piece of land. On the other side of the equation is land held by a public authority for a certain specific statutory function in New Haven to operate a port here, to operate an efficient system of education, which could not be delivered on that land, consistent with its status as a registered green. So effectively, there is a conflict between the statutory functions that apply to the land and section 15 and its consequences, which the Court in New Haven, certainly so far as the majority is concerned, were seeking to resolve, and they did so by reaching a conclusion that where land is held for statutory functions which cannot then be affected on the land as a consequence of the operation of section 15, section 15 should not be taken as to permit registration of that land. But I appreciate my lord's point, my lord Carmas' point, that is not something that is derived from section 15 itself. It requires no process of statutory construction. It simply involves seeking to identify what the intention of the legislature was in terms of the conflict between those two pieces of legislation. Sorry, my lady.
As I say, you have to read the general legislation as subject to specific legislation on the identical point. So it is, it does involve some process of construction, because you cannot give full effect to the general legislation on village greens, where there is specific statutory, a specific statutory requirement to use a legislation for another purpose. I'm not trying to set up any test of statutory compatibility, but I think it does raise problems of construction.
Yes, I mean, I think it is, yes, it is a construction point, my lady, I accept to that extent. And the simple point I was seeking to encapsulate is that I don't think it involves any close textual analysis of section 15. It simply involves appreciating what the consequences of section 15 and its operation are on the statutory regime for which the land is held.
Yes, I mean, they do treat it as analogous, at least, to the rule about generale, speciale, was known derogant, although not specifically covered by it, I think.
Yes, I mean, I think that's right, my lord. I was going to just touch on that point. I mean, they do, I think the word is, draw some assistance from that particular principle of statutory, because I'm not quite sure that that applies directly to the kind of issue that was being confronted by the Court in New Haven or here, but that perhaps does give some indication of the, of the position. There is mine flicking through this, well, there was something that, yeah, I mean, I was, the paragraph I was looking for, in response to Lord Carmas' point, is paragraph 76 in the majority judgment. I'll just pink this up, where there is acknowledged towards the middle of that paragraph on page 650, that there is no express exclusion of land held by statutory undertakers for statutory purposes. Paragraph 76 halfway through. Therefore, any restriction on the scope of section 15 would have to be implicit. So if I can then just take the Court back to where I was, which is paragraph 93, I had made the submission by reference to the question posed and answered in the third and fourth sentences, that the land held by Lancashire County Council as a local education authority is land that is held for a particular statutory purpose, which, for the reasons I've indicated, would be inconsistent with its registration of land as a green. And then the, after that question is answered, the sentence, where Parliament has conferred on a statutory undertaker powers to acquire land compulsorily and to hold that land for a defined statutory purpose, the 2006 Act does not enable the public to acquire by user rights which are incompatible with the continued use of the land for those statutory purposes. Again, we would submit, my lords and my lady, that that is directly applicable to circumstances where land is acquired by a local education authority specifically for the discharge of its functions as such. And as I've already made the submission, there is, of course, nothing in the legislation that applied to New Haven, in New Haven, to indicate that there was any positive obligation to use the beach for any particular purpose. There was nothing within the legislation that applied specifically to that beach. There was a general duty to maintain and support a harbour, but that is a general duty that applies to whatever land the Harbour Authority happened to own at a point in time for the purposes of discharge of that duty. And we submit that there is very little, by way of a point of principle, that can differentiate the position in New Haven in terms of the land and its statutory context with the position that the Court is confronted with so far as land held by a local education authority is concerned.
Can I just ask, why is the, there the focus on lands compulsorily acquired? Was the New Haven land compulsorily acquired? Excuse me.
I don't believe so. There's certainly nothing in the judgment, I have detected, that indicates that the land was acquired by compulsion. And I, the answer, my lord, I don't know why there was focus in that particular sentence on land held, acquired, following compulsory acquisition, but it's very difficult to see that once land is acquired either by compulsory purchase or by agreement, it has the same status, as it were, in terms of, in this case, a local education-
Quite, because, I mean, to acquire land compulsorily, you need the power to acquire land, and if someone's willing to tell it, you don't need to invoke your compulsory, your powers of compulsory acquisition.
That is correct, my lord, yes.
So it just seems a little bit strange that there's the focus on compulsory acquisition.
But I can't assist, my lord, as to why there was that focus in that case, but my simple submission is that it doesn't make a difference what the source of the acquisition is. Once it's acquired, it becomes subject to the same sorts of rights. I mean, there are certain consequences that follow in terms of land that is compulsorily acquired when it is disposed of. There are the certain rules that it has to be offered back in certain circumstances to the individual from whom it was originally acquired, but beyond that, nothing turns upon what the source of the acquisition is as compared between compulsion or agreement. My lords and my lady, then, if I can turn to the position so far as the Court below is concerned, the Court below, considering New Haven, this is both the Court of Appeal and the High Court, formed the view that in order for the approach in New Haven to be engaged, the land has to be held for, and I quote here, if I may, from Lord Justice Limblom in the Court of Appeal, at paragraph 40, which the Court wishes to have it open, it's in the Core Volume at 226, page 226. So 2226, forgive me, 2226.
Which paragraph are we going to?
Paragraph 40 in the judgements of Lord Justice Limblom.
Thank you.
I might have given the wrong reference there.
I think you have.
I think I have. Yeah, 22, as I wrote the one, wrote one down and read the wrong one out, 22, 2266.
Mr Edwards, can you keep your voice up so people at the back can hear?
Of course, yeah, sure. 2226. And at paragraph 40 on that page, towards the middle of the paragraph, there seems to be the kernel of the approach that the Court of Appeal concluded in terms of being the correct one. And Lord Justice Limblom says this, "By contrast with New Haven Port and Properties, there were no specific statutory purposes or provisions attaching to this particular land. Parliament has not conferred on the County Council's local education authority powers to use this particular land for specific statutory purposes with which its registration as a town or village green would be incompatible." Essentially, the approach of the Court of Appeal, following that of Mr Justice Ousley, is there have to be essentially specific statutory purposes that apply to a particular parcel of land.
So in the New Haven context, if the New Haven Authority had not had a specific act, but had acquired, had been a sort of dock company which acquired land voluntarily for the purpose of creating a harbour, then the Court of Appeal would say that was a different situation, would they?
That seems to follow, my lord. There has to be something particular. And I'll come back to why that is, we say that is wrong in a moment, but before doing so, just think of the implications of that. If you have a statutory undertaker, unlike the port of New Haven, say a water undertaker, that whose duty it is to provide fresh water and sewage facilities, their powers are generally derived from the Water Industry Act of 1991. They're entirely general. They have a duty to provide services within a particular area, and they have general powers to acquire land by agreement or indeed by compulsion or rights, by agreement or compulsion, to discharge their duties. I mean, if they were to exercise powers under, say, the Water Industry Act, to acquire a parcel of land for the purposes of a new water treatment works, now that power of acquisition is derived expressly from a general power in the Water Industry Act, and on the approach of the Court of Appeal in New Haven, they wouldn't be able to take advantage or to prey on aid this particular approach, because effectively, their power of acquisition, therefore their holding of the land, is derived from the exercise of general provisions.
I mean, is there anything in the textbooks that helps us on this? Because my impression is that, one goes back in time, most of the statutory undertakes, you might recall, were exercising powers under specific acts, and then gradually one had general acts developed, and some, first of all, these clauses acts, which covered the whole area, and then you have more general acts which actually give, and so, but it'd be nice to see that sort of historical development explained somewhere.
Yeah, I mean, it's not, forgive me, it was not a matter that I've looked, researched in detail, but the submission I was going to make later briefly, what I can make at this stage, is, your lordship is right, that some of the earlier acts, indeed, these earlier cases, the Victorian cases, where the issue about statutory incompatibility in the context of the acquisition of prescriptive rights is examined, are considered in the context of the statutory functions derived from local or private acts. And that is unsurprising, because that was the source generally of powers at that time. I mean, since then, a great deal of general legislation has been introduced that confers powers and duties upon various statutory authorities. So, you know, the fact that some of these earlier cases were decided in the context of specific local acts, in my submission, isn't an indication that they are, the principle in those cases is in some way limited to powers and obligations derived from local acts.
Yes, I mean, I have at the back of my mind that this issue arose in the context of rating back in the case I was involved in in the House of Lords in the 70s or 80s, relating to Harrowd docks, which, being a relative modern dock, was set up without a specific act. And the question was whether that was a statutory undertaker within the meaning of the particular rating legislation. And, but I mean, I mean, that's just, it's just, I think one, it may be quite difficult to sort of distinguish between the specific acts and the more general acts, and you would say there's no distinction in principle.
Well, that's what I would say, my lord, it's very difficult to see that as a matter of principle, there is any basis for that sort of distinction, because if you, if New, the approach in New Haven is read down to the extent that the Court of Appeal did it, then essentially it could only operate in a very narrow range of circumstances where a specific parcel of land was held pursuant to, for example, a local or private act to which specific duties applied. Now, first of all, there is nothing in the judgements in New Haven to indicate that that is the approach that the Court of Appeal were advocating, and in any event, it singularly lacks principle, because you would end up drawing a distinction between the kind of position in New Haven, read narrowly as the Court of Appeal suggest, and other statutory undertakers, properly so-called, the water undertakers, is the example that I referred to previously, that have powers set out in general acts to acquire land for their purposes, and if they acquire that land, then on the basis of the approach of the Court of Appeal, they would not be able to prey and aid the principle as enunciated by the Court in New Haven for the purposes of the effect of TVD registration on that land. And there is nothing in principle, in my submission, that can be identified that would justify that particular differentiation. And in any event, in addition to that particular point, there seems in our submission to be three difficulties arising from the Court of Appeal's approach in New Haven. Firstly, this particularity or specificity is not something that is identified at all in the judgements either of the President of the Court or Lord Hodge, and they give no indication at all that in some way the approach that they were identifying to be as being the correct one requires a statutory power or duty that is attached specifically to a parcel of land. Secondly, in my submission, it proceeds upon a misunderstanding of the legal basis and consequences of the acquisition of land by a local authority under, say, the Education Act, which for reasons that I've already submitted, involve a deliberative, conscious decision that the land is required for education purposes, and having been so acquired, it can't be used for anything else, absent a formal process of appropriation. Thirdly, it isn't grounded in the particular circumstances of New Haven, which again, for reasons that I've already submitted at least once, involves powers to support and maintain a harbour, but doesn't fix those powers to any specific area of land, let alone the beach that was the subject of issue, that was in issue in New Haven. There's nothing that introduces that degree of particularity or specificity in New Haven. And fourthly, for the reasons I- And fourthly, for the reasons I've already submitted, drawing that sort of differentiation confines the operation of the approach in New Haven simply to a very specific, narrow range of private or local acts, and means that it would not be applied to the normal run of statutory undertakers who derive their specific powers from the exercise of general acts, such as the Water Industry Act, for example. And for those, essentially four reasons, we would submit that the approach of the Court of Appeal and indeed the High Court, which is to introduce a very narrow particularity or specificity test to the operation of the New Haven principle, is not justified. And we say exactly the same approach should apply in the instant case.
Just going back to the point I raised with you before about paragraph ninety-three, where this court's talking about powers to acquire land compulsorily. I mean, ordinarily, those would be in general legislation, would they not? Or, or, or could they be contemplating a situation where Parliament has given powers to acquire land compulsorily, and it's specific land that those powers are focused on?
I mean, the, the process of seeking to exercise powers of compulsion are set out in general acts such as the Compulsory Purchase Act and the Land Acquisition Act. In terms of a local authority, there would normally be something within the act from which it derives its powers to indicate that it is entitled to acquire land compulsorily or otherwise. In the context of a local education authority, a section five hundred and thirty-one, I think it is, of the Education Act nineteen ninety-six, introduces a power to acquire land by compulsion, statutory education purposes.
My point was, that helped me with this. I'm not aware that Parliament would say, "You have power to acquire land compulsorily, but it's just that parcel of land."
That is absolutely right, my lord. There are, there would be powers to seek to acquire land compulsorily, but they most certainly will, well, I can't think of a case anyway, my lord, where though that particular power is specified as being limited to a specific piece or indeed area of land.
So I'm just wondering whether you can add to the list that you've given us of difficulties with the, the Court of Appeal's interpretation of New Haven, that, that they don't face up to what the court itself says in paragraph ninety-three about use of, of powers of compulsory purchase, which certainly ordinarily would be general.
Yes, my lord, that is, that, I, I understand and I accept that point. But I think it does go a little bit, bit further, which is a point I sought to make earlier on, perhaps a little bit too shortly, is that, you know, of course, so far as New Haven is concerned, I mean, it would have powers to acquire land for the purposes of undertaking, both by compulsion, subject to approval of the Secretary of State, and by agreement. Of course, those powers, even the powers to acquire land by agreement, wouldn't be specific to a parcel of land. It would simply allow them to acquire a piece of land or area of land that may be considered necessary for the discharge of their functions. And exactly the same thing applies to land held by a local, to the functions of a local education authority, that it has power to acquire land by compulsion or by agreement for the discharge of its functions.
It must depend on the function, I mean, it's perfectly standard for a, an act authorizing construction of a railway to give you a part or acquire a particular strip of land specific to that.
That's, that is right, my lord, yes.
HS two or something like that. Whereas in other contexts like this, it's much more normal to have a general power to acquire land and then to identify when you know what you want.
Well, my lord's absolutely right, and that's the traditional format of, of works acts, as it were, local acts or private acts to construct railways. There is a power to acquire land by agreement or otherwise within the, this will be limits of deviations provided for in the act. That is now followed forward into development consent orders, which is the mechanism now used for acquiring works for infrastructure. But of course, that is rather different from even the position in New Haven in the sense that there wasn't a act that drew a red line over a particular area of land and said, "This is where you have to exercise your function." Effectively, where the port authority, you know, needed to exercise powers to discharge their duties was a matter for them to determine from time to time and also to acquire land for that purpose. So, my lord, that, my lords and ladies, that was the point about why we say New Haven is far too narrow in terms of its approach. Can I just then seek, just to illuminate that point, but just by testing it in two ways? First of all, you just imagine a situation where instead of Lancashire County Council holding land pursuant to the Education Act nineteen ninety-six that confers upon it powers and duties for the entirety of the county of Lancaster. If they had actually derived those same powers from an act that was specific, say, to Lancaster itself, rather than to the whole county, and had acquired land pursuant to those sorts of, or an act of that nature, then it would seem on the face of it that, following on from New Haven, that land acquired pursuant to a local act of that nature by the County Council as local education authority would actually be able to take the benefit of the particular approach in New Haven. Whereas simply because the powers set out in the local, in the Education Act nineteen ninety-six apply to the county as a whole, they are not, and that rather emphasizes the lack of any real understandable point of principle to draw the distinction that the court was seeking to do. And secondly, by way of a test, just move away from the law relating to town and village greens for a moment and consider the acquisition by a prescriptive process of either public rights of way or easements. Now, following on from the approach that was explained and recognised by the court in New Haven, if, for example, a public right of way was claimed over a parcel of land held by a local education authority by reason of long use, either through implied or presumed dedication, then in those circumstances, the principle in the British Transport Commission and Westmoreland would be engaged, that's set out in, at length in the judgment in New Haven. And that right would only be deemed to be acquired if it was not foreseeably inconsistent with the discharge of the functions on the land. So if there was foreseeably a conflict between the public right of way that was claimed and the statutory functions over the land, then the, applying the established principles, that public right of way would not come into being. Now, I appreciate there are different mechanisms by which public rights of way come into existence through implied or deemed dedication compared to village greens, where there's no process of implied or deemed dedication. But it would be very odd indeed, in my submission, if the approach of the established law were to prevent the acquisition of a public right of way through a process of implied or deemed dedication, but nevertheless to allow village green rights, which are much more onerous in their consequences, to come into existence. It seems to me that that comes back to the point that was set out by Lord Newburger and Lord Hodge in paragraph ninety-one, that you can draw some support in terms of the approach from the way that the courts have sought to reconcile the acquisition of prescriptive rights with with statutory duties. So, lords and ladies, the final point on this is to deal with this floodgates argument that is advanced particularly by Mr. Westaway, where it's said essentially, "Well, if you start to extend New Haven in the way that Lancashire County Council suggests, then pretty much every parcel of land held by a local authority is going to be incapable of being registered as a green." We don't accept that at all in terms of a likely consequence. Plainly, it is the case that if land is held by a local authority for the discharge of its functions derived from a general act such as the Education Act or the Housing Act or potentially the Highway Act, then the same sort of considerations are going to come into play, no doubt about that. But local authorities own land for a whole range of different purposes and sometimes for no established purpose at all. And it is only if in an individual case that it can be demonstrated that the land has been acquired and held for a specific purpose with which village green registration would be inconsistent, that the principle arises. And the burden of proof will be on the local authority in each and every case to demonstrate the statutory holding power and the inconsistency. And there are many cases where local authorities are not able to establish that. And some of the cases that have come before the courts in terms of village green registration are examples of it. New Windsor Corporation and Mella, which is in the bundle of page sixty, was an old case that concerns an area of land held by the New Windsor Corporation, having been held by them for centuries, quite frankly, or predecessor local authorities, such as, such that the local authority was not able to identify the purpose for which the land was held. And plainly, in those circumstances, there would be no statutory incompatibility that could arise. Similarly, in the Oxfordshire Trapgrounds case, the basis or power and, or function for which Oxford City Council held the land was simply unknown. They held the land, they wanted to use it for housing purposes, but the purpose for which they held it at the point of registration again was unknown. And the same thing in Lewis and Redcar. It was used as a golf course and rented or leased to a golf club for use, but the purposes for which it was held had not been identified. And that, my lords and ladies, is not uncommon in terms of local authorities, and they often hold all sorts of pieces of land, some of which can be attributed to a certain statutory function, as a matter of fact, many can't. So it's certainly that the principle that we submit is the correct one would not assist local authorities in those circumstances. Similarly, there are other statutory powers by which local authorities can acquire land which wouldn't of themselves give rise to any likely inconsistency. And in our written case, we've referred in particular to section one hundred and twenty, subsection one of the Local Government Act nineteen seventy-two, that allows a local authority to acquire land for the benefit or improvement of its area. And there is a similar power in section two hundred and twenty-six of the Town and Country Planning Act nineteen ninety. Now, those sorts of functions which would allow a local authority to acquire a piece of land because, say, it was concerned that the land was being used for antisocial activities or things of that nature. Now, acquiring land for those purposes would not ordinarily and in and of itself give rise to the kind of inconsistency that we're saving.
But even there, you're likely to have an implied position, aren't you?
Well, it depends on the purpose which local.
I can't remember the Barkas case, wasn't that, that sort of?
Well, Barkas was land that was held for open space purposes under the Housing Act. So there was a specific statutory provision that allowed for open space. I certainly accept that if land is acquired pursuant to the range of powers available to a local authority to acquire land as public open space, that wouldn't be inconsistent with TVG registration, but TVG registration would be prevented by the, by right position anyway, because the public would be assumed to have a right to use land for those purposes. That's not what I'm on, on this, this is land that's just acquired for general purposes to benefit or improve an area without any specific use. So, my lord, for those reasons, yes, the principle would apply to land held by a local authority for particular statutory functions, but would not apply to all land. Then finally, on this point, can I take the court back to New Haven briefly? And turn within it to paragraph one hundred and one, one oh one, which is page six-five-eight. Paragraph one oh one is something of a conclusion on the previous three paragraphs where the court examine in order the Windsor Corporation and Mella case, the Oxfordshire or Trapgrounds case, and Lewis and Redcar, and observe really the same point that I've just made in submission, that there was no suggestion of statutory incompatibility there. And we say that is understandable because there was no statutory holding power alleged to which incompatibility would attach. And then in paragraph one oh one, the court conclude this. "In our view, therefore, these cases do not assist the respondents. The ownership of land by a public authority such as a local authority which has statutory powers that it can apply in future to develop land is not in itself sufficient to create a statutory incompatibility." Now, that, lords and ladies, is plainly right in the sense that incompatibility has to be established at the point of registration. And if incompatibility is not established at that point, either because the local authority can't identify a holding power, or B, if they can, that there is no incompatibility, that does not engage the principle. What this paragraph, my submit, is making clear, that if thereafter the local authorities say, "Well, we want to use the land for a particular statutory function" that would be impeded by village green registration following a process of appropriation or otherwise, that does not save them. So the fact that in Oxfordshire, Oxford City Council could say, "Well, we've got this piece of land, we don't really know why we are holding it or for what purpose at the point of registration, but we may want to appropriate it in the future to allow it to be developed for housing," that would not save them. And that, in my submission, is the classic example of relying upon powers to allow development of land in the future, that's what's being referred to. So, lords and ladies, those were my submissions on the principle element of ground one, unless I agree of any further assistance on that. And can I then turn just briefly to what we've identified in our case, as has Mr. Lawrence, as the future use point? Now plainly, we put at the forefront of our case that the approach in New Haven is directly applicable, directly applicable to the circumstances of the land held in Lancashire for education purposes.
The future use point, which arises from something I sort of hinted at, doesn't really, is not really before us, is it? Because the question of what happens if it is registered is not an issue within the side of this appeal.
As point raised by Mr. Billy, it is entirely fairly raised. The point simply doesn't go to supporting a quashing order, which is the relief of the sort here. It simply arises, if, if New Haven is confined to certain specific circumstances, the question then arises, what happens afterwards? And that is the context in which the future use point arises. Now, lord, it's absolutely right, it is not a ground that would give rise to a quashing order, but both Mr. Lawrence, on behalf of the NHS, and I would submit that it would be helpful and appropriate if the court goes down the route of saying that New Haven is confined to certain circumstances, to give some guidance on what happens afterwards. Because there would still be effectively a tension, we would say, an irreconcilable tension, between the effects of registration and the effects of the land being held for the discharge of statutory functions. And that brings, we would submit.
You did refer to the future use point in your grounds of appeal.
We did.
Speaking for myself, I don't know what my colleagues think, I think it would be helpful for us to take some look at that. So, we're not stopping you at this stage.
I'm going to deal with the point very briefly, if I may, my lord. As I indicated, that if, if the land, if New Haven is confined, there is still going forward, going to be some tension, we would say, an irreconcilable tension, between land being held next to Moreside Primary School and used as its playground and playing fields, and the right of local residents, which they would be entitled to exercise, to go onto the land at any time, to walk their dogs, play with their children or whatever. And there is obviously going to be some point at which they are going to clash, as it were. And that then raises, the point is, how is that conflict to be reconciled? Now, if New Haven is constrained in terms of its application to very specific and narrow circumstances, then New Haven doesn't help. And that then, in my submission, brings in precisely the point that my lord, Lord Carnworth, identified as being at least arguable in the context of New Haven, which is that the land may be registered, but it is registered and rights accrue in a way, certainly as I understand the point, as it was put, in a way that is then limited by the fact that the local authority can then use the land subsequently in a way that is consistent with its statutory functions. And that essentially would involve the local authority, if it became necessary, to actively use the land for a specific purpose post-registration, to, to do so, and for any rights to be taken, to be subject to the local authority's entitlement.
Of course, Mr. Lawrence deals with this, and he seeks to expand how future use would work. And you won't have, you will have noticed that he says, "And of course, this would cover selling the land if the local authority needed it for, needed the proceeds for a different lawful purpose." And, I mean, I don't know whether you associate yourself with that, but, I mean, could that proposition, no doubt highly logical on the part of Mr. Lawrence, rather blow this point away? On the basis, frankly, if registration today can be followed tomorrow by sale free of registration, then what are we talking about?
Lord, I, Mr. Lawrence obviously will make his submissions this afternoon, I do not go that far in terms of the operation of this principle.
You've got a problem with the Trapgrounds case, haven't you? Because, you know, you've distinguished that on the base that there wasn't. One was talking about the future, not the present. But, I mean, the, what the authority were wanting to do was to use it for their statutory functions of housing. And clearly, Lord Hoffman thought that would have been knocked out by the nineteenth century statutes.
Well, I'm not sure it's necessarily inconsistent, my lord, because if, you imagine the scenario, well, if it's the scenario that I am addressing, which is the land held by a local education authority is registered. If the local education authority then wished to use the land for those statutory functions, that, in my submission, will, will then lead to the particular conflict. Of course, if the local authority then decide to appropriate the land that is a registered green to some other purpose, they can't do that free of restriction because statute says. says that in case of appropriation of land that is a town or village green, there has to be exchange land provided, unless it's very small. I think there's a, there's a dispensation for an area of land that is 250 square yards or less that can be appropriated without without exchange land. But thereafter, if the local authority held land for purpose X, the land was registered, they wanted to then use it for purpose Y, which would require an appropriation, then statute would intervene to require exchange land to be provided in those circumstances.
I think you probably did tell us the provision, but can you just remind me?
Yes, it's it's section 222, subsection two of the Local Government Act 1972, which is in volume one. And, sorry, forgive me, it's 122, in fact, reminds me, not 222.
Yes, in fact.
And there is another provision, which is of some importance, which is section 229 of the Town and Country Planning Act 1990, which is not in the bundle. And that is the provision that requires exchange land to be provided where a town or village green is appropriated.
Sorry, what was the...
Section 229 of the Town and Country Planning Act 1990.
So in the Trapgrounds case, you say, if they'd wanted to use it for housing, they'd have had to appropriate it, and they would then have had, following the House of Lords' decisions, they'd have had to find some exchange land.
Precisely, my lord, yes. That's, that is, that's the limitation. And if, say, for example, in Lancashire, if it's right the land is held for statutory education functions, if the local authority said, well, we don't think we need that anymore post-registration, we'd like to use it, say, as a leisure centre or a community centre, there would need to be an appropriation before that can take place, and an appropriation would give rise to a statutory requirement for exchange land. And that's the limitation on the point.
Does the exchange land have to be in the same locality?
Yes, my lord, there are certain qualitative tests that are set out in policy as to what exchange land should be. It's, the test is along the line of equally beneficial or something of that nature, which brings us...
Because the rights which are being removed and they're going to attach to the exchange land are rights of people in the locality, aren't they? So presumably, it needs to be accessible to them.
Yes, my, as, as, I'll check this over lunch, but as I recall, the policy tests are, the tests are policy tests, and there are a whole series of considerations such as proximity, accessibility, and general qualitative considerations that will be brought to bear by the planning inspectorate, who will be the ultimate determiners of this, I shall be honest, Secretary of State.
So, I mean, just depending on what the locality is like, I mean, if you're dealing with a highly built up locality where there really is only one bit of green land, and that's the land to which the TVG rights attach, it, these powers may exist, but they're not going to be capable of being outsized.
That's entirely right, my lord. And in practice, exchange land, which, a requirement for exchange land which applies to village greens, comments, also applies to allotments of certain kinds as well, are notoriously difficult to be able to establish by a party.
I mean, have, have, have these powers ever been used, as far as you know?
Oh, there certainly are examples of it, my lord, yes. And the mechanism is that a request is made for exchange land, if there's an objection, it then goes to the Secretary of State, who then will determine the matter following a hearing or a public inquiry convened by the planning inspectorate. There are certainly examples of it happening, but they generally, in my experience, are small parcels of land, and it is not, if I may put it this way, a process to be undertaken lightly, because there are very significant evidential difficulties. So on the future use point, we don't put the point as widely as Mr Lawrence does. We would submit that it applies, if it applies at all, in circumstances such as the present, that if a local authority owns land for a statutory purpose at the point of registration, and the land is registered, then the rights that accrue on registration and the Victorian legislation is, operates subject to the entitlement of the local authority thereafter to use the land for that statutory purpose. And it doesn't have the far reaching consequences of, if the land is sold, then some third party can do what they like on the land, and it certainly doesn't allow the local authority to use the land for a different statutory purpose, absent appropriation and exchange land. And a principled basis for this, I think, can be found relatively straightforwardly in the decision of this court in Lewis and Redcar, which obviously introduced the process or the principle of equivalence whereby the rights that accrue upon registration are the equivalent to the nature of the use that took place during the qualifying period. And users, local inhabitants who will become vested with the right, can't use it for any greater extent that places a greater burden on a landowner post-registration compared to the use that took place during the qualifying period. And we would submit that this is entirely consistent as an approach, if it needs to be, if the court needs to go that far with the operation of a principle of equivalence. The land during the qualifying periods is always subject to the local authority using the land for its statutory purpose, as happened in the Lancashire case, when they started to use areas A and B as a playground and a playing fields in particular. And when the land is registered, the rights and the operation of the legislation is again subject to that principle. And there is a clear example of how that works in a case that's in the bundle, this decision of the Court of Appeal, and a case called TW Logistics and Essex County Council. It's a decision of the Court of Appeal last year, it's in the authorities' bundle, tab 27, page 714, where the Court of Appeal, in particular, Lord Justice Lewison, explained that the Victorian legislation, when it refers to use of such a village green or references of that nature, is directed at the particular context of the village green in question and the particular rights that apply to it. So the Victorian legislation cannot extend the principle of equivalence to allow a wider range of uses to be protected compared to the use that was made in the qualifying period. That case has been given permission to come to this court, I think, relatively recently. So I'll see, perhaps for obvious reasons, not take that point any further by reference to that case.
Yes.
So, my lord, those were my submissions on ground one and the future use point.
Could I just ask you, just as a small technical point, in your formulation, you said if the local authority owns land for the statutory purpose at the point of registration, i- is it at the point of registration? I mean, if if an application is made to register, could the local authority then appropriate land to new purposes and protect it?
Yes, yes, my lord, they could. I see the point, my lord, my lord has in mind on this. I deliberately put the point that effectively statutory incompatibility bites at the point of registration, because it is registration that gives rise to the incompatibility. I can certainly see in in a case where it is relevant, there is scope to argue that the incompatibility has to be considered either at the end of the qualifying period, if that is before the application, or at the date of the village green application itself. Because if, I mean, I can understand that if effectively an application is made on the first of January year X, it isn't determined for two years after that, then if a local authority were to appropriate the land in the intervening period between application and and decision, then that would give, you know, very considerable scope for a local authority to, you know, avoid the consequences of registration. I put the point deliberately on the basis that that incompatibility has to be considered at the point of registration, because that seems to be the logical point. But there is scope to argue that it could be at an earlier stage. But I don't think in either this case or in the NHS case, that position arises because there had been no appropriation between the date of application in the Lancashire case or the earlier date in 2008 of the end of the qualifying period or indeed registration. So, my lords and ladies, can I then briefly, in the time I have available before lunch, and I'm due to finish with the statutory holding power. There plainly, as the court's aware, was an issue before the public inquiry as to whether or not, as a matter of fact, the land was owned and held by Lancashire County Council in its capacity as local education authority. The burden of proof plainly is on the county council in that respect, and it led evidence before the inspector that is set out in annex one to the appellant's written case and and in the statement of facts and issues, which sets out what that evidence was. And we say, put simply, that all of the relevant evidence before the inspector pointed one way and one way only, and led unavoidably to a conclusion that the land was and remained held for education purposes. And we say that that the conclusion of the inspector to the contrary is firstly a material error of fact, secondly, if we need to go that far, is wensbury and reasonable, and thirdly, in any event, was wrongly arrived at because no regard was had to the operation of the presumption of regularity. And essentially, if we get home on any of those three points, then the inspector's decision on the facts, we say, should not be regarded as sustainable.
I mean, you say all the evidence such as there was, that it was being held for educational purposes, and there wasn't any evidence, so it was held for anything else.
That is right, my lord, and the inspector essentially says as much. I can take the court just briefly to the decision letter for a moment to make it that point. So it's core volume, and it's the decision letter, it's taken the court's already, begins at page 2318, and the relevant paragraphs begin on page 2337. Can I just briefly invite the court to reread paragraphs 113 and 114?
Certainly.
I don't need to invite the court to read 115, because that deals with matters that are not particularly relevant, then 116, 117, and 118, may I?
You'd like to read those?
Yes, please.
Certainly.
The court will, my lords and ladies, will then see that certainly in terms of the way the inspector summarised the evidence before her in paragraphs 113, 114, and 116, all of that evidence, we submit, was consistent and consistent only with the relevant land being acquired for and held for education purposes. I will come back to 117 in a moment. But in terms of the inspector's overall conclusion, which is paragraph 118, she brought the information as unsatisfactory. Although there is no evidence to suggest that it is held other than for education purposes, it's not possible to be sure that the county council's statement that the land was acquired and is held for education purposes and was so held throughout the 20-year relevant period accurately reflects the legal position. And we say that is simply just an error, an error of fact, quite frankly, in the sense that all...
What, you say, assume it's the wrong test?
Well, that is a point that I argued with some degree of vigour in the courts below, introducing the test of sure, which is obviously consistent with a higher standard than the civil standard. And that was not well received in the courts below in the sense that it was said, well, this is an inspector who was a solicitor, and she does, and in fairness, I'd like to point this out, identify that the standard of proof is the balance of probabilities earlier in her decision.
Even so, it's a, it's a very odd word for a lawyer to insinuate at that point.
I agree with most of my submissions. And it's also, if I may say so, rather odd that the inspector reached the conclusion she did, having expressly concluded that there was no evidence to suggest other than the land was held for education purposes. Now, my submission, the inspector had to grapple with the evidence that was before her. That is the evidence set out in paragraphs 113, 114, and 116, which, as I said in the court below and repeat here, all pointed in one direction.
Remind us, what did section 87.3 of the 1944 Act say?
Well, section, that is in the bundle, my lord. It might be easier and quicker if I just take you to it, if I may.
Thank you.
It's in volume two, and it's behind tab 31.
Page?
Page 844. 844, tab 31. And it's all to do with exemptions from the statutes of Mortmain, something that was rather new on me before this case. But even as far as the 1940s, there was a restriction on the transfer of land to charitable institutions, and essentially, section 87 makes an exemption where the transfer is for education purposes and requires that any, it's called an assurance, and an assurance is defined in the early, the previous tab, actually, in the 1888 Mortmain and Charitable Uses Act, as including a conveyance. So effectively, it's a conveyance of land for education purposes is lawful as long as a copy of that conveyance is sent within a certain period of time, I think it's six months, to the minister, who then acknowledges receipt.
So subsection three sends one up to subsection one, which you say couldn't be clearer?
Could not be clearer. And there is an endorsement, as the court will see, on the actual conveyance of areas A and B that says this has been entered into the books of the Ministry of Education. Could not be clearer. The inspector doesn't deal with that, of course, at all. Doesn't deal with it at all.
Yeah.
Nor does she deal with the fact that the land which included areas A and B was transferred in 1948 along with a wider parcel of land on which Moreside Primary School was constructed, again, only consistent with the land having been acquired for education purposes.
Not sure if I've fully digested the the impact of the Mortmain Acts, but does this point feed into the presumption of legality as well? Can you help us with that?
Yes, yes, I put it on two bases. First of all, it is direct evidence that the land was acquired for education purposes. Can I just take the court just briefly to appendix part two, just to identify the source of this? And in the appendix part two pagination, page 220. This is the conveyance of an area of land including areas A and B. And just for completeness, if you turn forward, sorry, to in, back into the appendix to page 226, there's a plan that identifies with a darker line the area that was transferred that includes areas A and B, and an area on which Moreside Primary School was then built. If the court then goes back to page 220, frontispiece of the conveyance, you will see a stamp, bottom left hand side, recorded in the books of the Ministry of Education under section 87.3 of the Education Act 1944. And that then takes you directly back to the Education Act 1944, which is volume two, tab 31, subsections two and three. So that is consistent and consistent only with the land having been acquired for education purposes. And in response to my Lord, Lord Sales' point, not only is it direct evidence of that, but also it feeds directly into the presumption of regularity point, because there was no business in terms of identifying, making that endorsement on the conveyance unless, in fact, the land had been acquired for education purposes.
But, but, if it, what would have been the effect of the statute of Mortmain if it hadn't been acquired for educational purposes?
It wouldn't have applied, I don't think, my lord. I'm thinking on my feet on that now, because the statute of Mortmain applies where land is transferred to a charitable institution. Education is a charitable purpose, which is why I think, if there's any, I'll reflect on that over lunch, but I think that is why.
So, so if it wasn't, I follow all your points about this point evidentially to it being acquired for educational purposes. But if it hadn't been acquired for educational purposes, one would still just have had the conveyance, and that would have been a perfectly lawful transaction.
Yes, that is right, my lord, yes, absolutely. There could have been plainly a conveyance to the local authority for, say, housing purposes that wouldn't have engaged the requirement to follow the procedure relating to the operation of the statute of Mortmain.
Yes, thank you.
That's the point.
That helps.
So, lords, first of all, we say that the inspector's conclusions are not consistent with the evidence. Secondly, they are internally inconsistent in the sense that having considered the evidence, she then says, well, no evidence of being used for any other purpose. Thirdly, it doesn't pay any regard to the implications of the endorsement on the 1948 conveyance. And latterly, not unimportantly, it doesn't pay any regard to the fact that at the time of her decision, part of the land that she was considering was actually in use for education purposes as a playground and a sports field and fenced as such.
So you say that a failure by a fact finder to consider... You say that a failure by a fact finder to consider relevant considerations is a point of law upon which the fact found can be displaced by an appellate court.
Yes, my lord. I put it on the basis I indicated earlier, either there is a material error of fact, which is a basis for intervention in terms of a court looking for errors of law, and/or it's simply just unreasonable. Now, in terms of material error of fact, we've set out in our case some reliance on the decision of the Court of Appeal, in particular the judgments of the Lord...
We need to go there, I mean, it seems to be a very different sort of case.
Well...
I mean, I see how you put it.
Yes, I mean, E and R sets out certain expressly non-precise considerations, or not exclusive considerations, that apply to an alleged error of fact. There's a mistake as to existing fact, including the absence of evidence to establish there wasn't any fault and it was material, and we say that the inspector's conclusions here are an example of a clear error of fact.
Yes, I mean, I do myself wonder whether you don't actually have to go for irrationality, because the inspector has looked at the materials, usually if the decision-maker has looked at the facts and made relevant findings of facts as necessary for them to exercise their functions. Well, speaking of myself, I would have thought that the test then to be applied is whether they behaved irrationally, rather than the court, if you like, second-guessing as a new primary fact finder, what the facts in fact were.
Well, my lord, I accept that point up to, that position up to a point. Firstly, there's nothing, of course, in E and R which introduced or recognised an error of fact as being a basis for a challenge on a point of law, that says you have to go so far as to there being irrationality. I mean, in this case, we say there was irrationality.
Well, in fact, there will be other categories of case where the decision-maker just hasn't turned their minds to it, but it can now be seen that they've made an error of fact, and that is an error that was material.
Yeah.
But in which case I can see that applying an irrationality standard isn't the appropriate standard, because they haven't looked there. But here, the inspector very specifically did look at it, and we say he just reached a conclusion that was a...
That I understand, yes.
The reason I'm slightly hesitant about going as far as your lordship puts the point to me is one of the examples of an error of fact identified by Lord Carnworth in the Court of Appeal in E and R is when it emerges that there is other relevant evidence that the inspector did not have regard to. And that obviously brings in the opportunity, in an appropriate case, for the reviewing or appellate court to consider additional evidence, which maybe, in this case, is decisive to the point. Now, as the court will be aware, what happened in the present case is the local authority at the public inquiry, I wasn't involved at the public inquiry, but Lancashire County Council put its case on the basis of the evidence that the inspector records. It was satisfied that that ought to have been enough for the inspector to reach a conclusion, which was positive to their case, that the land was held for education purposes. When that was not the outcome, the local authority did look again at its records and identified certain resolutions of the council that relate to areas A and B that put the matter beyond doubt, and those are referred to in the judgments of the Court of Appeal and are referred to in the bundle. And they include, in particular, a resolution in 1948 of various committees to acquire 13.8 acres of land from Mr Dilworth, who was the party who transferred the land in 1948 for the purposes of a proposed new primary school. We say that puts the matter beyond doubt. And in the court below, and I repeated in this court, we would invite the court to look benevolently at the position, to admit that evidence, and that evidence admitted, it makes the matter clear beyond any doubt, we would suggest. And for the court's note, we set out that evidence within Appendix Two to the written case.
Well, we appreciate this issue about the new evidence. We'll have, first of all, to see whether you get home without the need to refer to it. If you don't get home without the need to refer to it, then we've got to grapple with the issue about admissibility. I mean, I think we've got all those points.
All I would simply say on the question of admissibility and on the issue about generally the approach here, is that in other contexts, the court has taken, or courts at all level, including this court, has taken a relatively flexible and benevolent approach in terms of the interpretation of the legislation and its application in the context of town and village greens. And it's done so essentially for one principal reason, it's because the very onerous effects of registration on a landowner, and here a public sector landowner, would indicate that the court should take a reasonably flexible and benevolent approach. Now, a good example of that is a decision in this court, in Adams, Adamson, and Paddocko, which is in the Authorities' Volume Two, tab 46, is one of the series of Betterment and Paddocko cases that I referred to earlier.
Which volume?
It's in volume two, tab 46.
Page?
Uh, page 914.
Nine?
914. That was a, it is a conjoined appeal in Betterment and in Paddocko, and it was a rose from a series of cases where the landowner, who had been unsuccessful in resisting a village green application, made an application under section 14, the Commons Registration, I took the court to earlier, for it, the court to review the amendment made. One of those applications was made some 12 years after the original registration, and even if the court considers under section 14 that a different amendment should be made, or indeed no amendment at all, it has to nevertheless be satisfied that it is just to change the register or rectify the register. And the point was taken, I think, by majority in the court below, and Lord Justice Carnworth, as he then was, was part of the constitution there, that a gap of some 12 years was too long for it to be just. That then became the subject of an appeal to this court, and the court considered that that was not the way in which the discretion should be exercised, recognising, in particular, the public benefit in registers being correct, and secondly, and importantly, in recognising the very significant and onerous effects upon a landowner of registration. And that is an example, it's not an exact example.
Where did they say that?
Well, it's dealt with extensively in the judgments of Lady Hale. My lord, paragraphs 33 through to 44...
Well, give us the notes, we can look at it.
Lady Hale's judgment considers the relevant competing factors.
I mean, here, one's got, sort of, you would say, I suppose, competing public interests. On the one hand, the school, the education of the children, on the other hand, the public interest in open space, and there's a general interest in getting the facts right for the purpose.
Well, yes, my lord, that's exactly what I'd submit, and in the particular circumstances of the Lancashire case, there is a public interest from all sides, as it were.
I think that was one of the things that I mentioned in the E case as being a relevant factor, that there was a sort of, both parties shared an interest in getting the answer right in the public interest.
Precisely, my lord, in this case, there is precisely that, there's a public authority landowner for public purposes, the determining authority, the Secretary of State's a public authority, and the applicant is acting on behalf of a section of the public, effectively. So we would submit that there are strong reasons for the court to take a benevolent approach. Lords, finally, could I just take the court back to the decision letter?
Certainly.
And just deal with one point. So it's back in the Core Volume, page 2338. Paragraph 177, the inspector indicates that the council submits the documentation is clear.
177.
Sorry, 117, sorry. 117.
Yes.
LCC submits the documentation provides clear evidence that the application land is held for education purposes, no proof is necessary. However, no council resolution authorising the purchase of the land for education purposes or appropriating it to education purposes has been provided, and the conveyances themselves do not show for what purposes the council acquired the land, and although the endorsement on the documents makes reference to education, the authority for them is unknown. Just picking up those points, if I may, the latter point about the endorsement on the documents, presumably referring in particular to the endorsement on the 1948 conveyance dealing with the statute of mortmain, I mean, for the inspector to say the authority for them is unknown is, I must say, rather curious, in the sense that the authority for it is absolutely clear. That is section 87 of the Education Act 1944, which would only be consistent with the land being held for education purposes. Secondly, the inspector is quite right, as a matter of fact, that neither conveyance identified the power being relied upon. There was no requirement for it to do so, and that is not even remotely uncommon, not even remotely uncommon. But what the inspector did need to do is to grapple with the evidence that was actually before her, and which she sets out, and form a view on the balance of probabilities about where that leads in terms of the issue of...
What was the alternative argument? Was anyone arguing for something different?
The alternative argument, there wasn't any contrary evidence put in, by the way. The alternative argument was that you haven't done enough.
But not that it was being held for some other purpose or not?
There was no suggestion at all that the land was held for any other purpose, at all. And just finally on that point, as far as the absence of any reference to the statutory power relied upon in a conveyance, as I indicate, is not uncommon, and it is perhaps not without relevance, that in the Beresford case, case on village green law considered by the House of Lords, Lord Scott in that case, you know, did identify and refer to the circumstances there, where there was a conveyance of land, but no power identified for the purposes of that conveyance. And in reliance upon an earlier case called the Attorney General and Pool Corporation, which is referred to by Lord Scott in Beresford, which is Principal Authorities' Bundle, tab 17, page 417, said that, well, if a conveyance is silent, the power relied upon for the purposes of acquisition can be inferred from the use made of the land. Now, that principle applied to areas A and B at the time that the inspector was reaching her decision, and indeed during the qualifying period. Area B, and latterly, area A, were actively in use as school playing fields and fenced as such. So it seems that that perhaps is a basis by which the inspector could and should have considered that the land is held for education purposes. So put shortly, my lords and my ladies, we say there's an error of fact, it is unreasonable, the inspector did not, as she should have done, apply the presumption of regularity to the fact that the land was acquired in 1948, was used in part for education purposes, includes endorsements that are consistent only with that, which would lead, we say, to at the very least a presumption evidentially that the land was used for education purposes or acquired for education purposes, and absent any contrary evidence, which the inspector said, there was none, and acceded to the submission to that effect, would indicate that the inspector's conclusion ought to have been that the land was acquired for...
Does that complete your submissions, Mr Edwards?
Yes, it does, thank you.
Thank you. Mr Pike, a courtesy inquiry, because Lancashire's time is up, but as a matter of courtesy, do you follow? Very well. Well, then, we will rise now, look forward to hearing Mr Lawrence at two o'clock.